So not video, how much power do I got? All right, we'll see how we do.
We all sub mark?
One more, Amber's coming in.
Okay.
Yeah, we are streaming.
Hi Amber.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey.
Okay, we have a forum and it's seven o'clock, so I think I'll call the meeting to order. The first order of business will wait until the chimes start, stop, and then we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
And I apologize, I forgot to pull up the flag today.
That's okay. We all know what it looks like.
Yeah.
And it's still standing, even after the six. Okay, if we want to stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Polly back to the board. Polly Rice, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Was a member of the board for six years until 2019. From there, she, when she was on the board, she was the recording, the corresponding secretary. She was also liaison to the Friends. She has still been on the board of the Friends. So we welcome you back Polly with all your experience and story stories. Polly is taking Lauren's place and Lauren will be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and I'm glad to be back, so hi to everybody.
No, thank you. The first thing is the approval of the minutes from the December 21st meeting. I just had a couple of things that I noted. Under three approval of minutes, when we get down to like the eighth line, it said, reported that it should read the town took facilities master plan. I think it should be developed a facilities master plan. So there are many library capital expenses included in it. And further along, section 10, Ms. Lauren Miller spoke with Mrs. O'Neill. The next sentence was she explained that her and her husband, it should be she and her husband. I think those are the ones I thought. Does, oops, does anyone else have any additions, changes, corrections? I don't know how I lost this mark. Am I gone?
No, you're still on.
Is my page? Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I hit the bar. Does anyone have any additions, changes, additions to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Motion.
Polly, seconded by Kathleen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I'm abstaining.
I don't think there are any members of the public. We haven't received any input. I think that's the method if, when you have an on streaming meeting, someone is supposed to send any comments or requests, et cetera, to the town clerk for inclusion, but we haven't received any. I haven't received any communication, Lisa, or anyone else? Have you received any?
No, I haven't. No.
Okay. Department heads. In one of the last meetings in 2020, Amber, I think, asked if we could bring the department heads to really explain their departments a little, what goes on, and understand the department's heads a little bit better. So Stephanie, I'm happy to see you here in Sherm. Lisa, I'll let you direct from here.
Sure. So I guess we'll start with Stephanie because she's in my top right corner. So this is Stephanie Prado. She's head of children's services and I'm glad she's able to join us this evening. So Stephanie, would you like to share with us a little bit about your department, please?
Yeah, so I manage the children's department and we have two full-time staff members. We have 11 part-time staff members that I manage when we are fully staffed. In addition to hiring them, training them, and supervising and motivating them, I'm also responsible for the schedule, so making sure that our desk is covered and we have coverage for all of our curbside hours. In addition to the staffing component, I'm also responsible for the budgets of the children's department. So I manage our collections budget and our children's programming budget in addition to the summer reading budget. I supervise collection development for the department. So I have one full-time staff member, Hillary, who's very good at collection development and she does, she enjoys that tremendously, so she does a lot of that work for us, but I oversee it. So that includes ordering all the materials that we have, weeding the current collection, and also providing readers advisory services or helping connect people with books that they're looking for. Another huge part of what we do in the department is programming. So I know, you know this because you see the statistics, but we're currently offering virtual programs five days a week. Sometimes we have two programs a day for birth through grade six. We also, during the pandemic, we've started ordering, offering video content. So we upload two to three videos to our YouTube channel that are created by library staff for our community. So that's like two to three videos a week. And then we also have pickup activities for families who can come and physically take something home with them. That's usually some sort of craft for people who are maybe trying to get away from a little bit of the screen time. So programming is a large component. We also maintain and develop relationships with the community. So in the children's department, we try to cooperate and closely communicate with the schools, obviously, and also the preschools in our community, but also businesses, community groups, and individual community members who are able to enrich what we're able to offer in a lot of different ways. Our department is involved with town committees, as some of you know, and I also serve on some professional task forces on the regional level, like the New England Library Association, and also on the national level with the American Library Association. We also provide, I provide statistics and narrative reports on what we're doing. So I know you guys have kind of a snapshot from that. And the last thing that we've been focusing on a lot lately is our, we do our own marketing and social media for the children's department. So we're responsible for not only planning our programs, but then getting the word out there so hopefully people are aware of what we have to offer them. So that's kind of a snapshot. If you guys have questions or if there were specific parts of that you were interested in, I wasn't sure quite how much you wanted to know, so I give you an overview.
Stephanie, would you mind sharing information about raising readers? Because this is something that Stephanie developed on her own that I think is really important for our community that's so highly educated and so focused on reading.
Yeah, so we strive to offer excellent customer service in a lot of different ways. And one of the ways that we're currently doing that is through raising readers, which started off as a monthly email. So Hillary and I read a large number of children's books and we select the best ones and we write blurbs and create lists about them to provide more customized readers advisory to our community. So for example, when we have parents who are coming in and we hear over and over again that they're interested in topics like mindfulness or kindness, we can then curate a list of those books and send those out via email and patrons can just click through on the cover of the book and place it on hold from the library to get it into their hands. Since the pandemic, we've also leveraged reading, raising readers to provide additional support for families who are not able to browse in the building the way they used to, or perhaps who are not comfortable to coming into the building for browsing. So we're currently offering a custom book recommendation service where families can fill out a form and tell us their child's age and their reading level and what they're interested in. And Hillary and I will pick out books that are specifically geared towards their child. So we've had a lot of success and some really good feedback from that.
That was a wonderful resource doing Christmas shopping for my grandchildren. It really was.
Thank you.
Went to try to, you know, clue in on what they wanted and the age and feel very comfortable with what I was getting for them.
Thank you. We did, Mary Ann's talking about, we did a gift guide that, of children's books that we would purchase or we would recommend purchasing. That went out around late November. So I'm glad you found that useful.
Stephanie, I'll ask you one more question. Just be, I don't know if you're going to stay for the whole meeting, but one of the, I guess really the only service improvement that we're putting into the budget for next year would be to return the children's department levels to what it was 10 years ago? 12 years ago? What primarily would the additional funds go towards? What area? I know when we did this last year for the adults, there was a big field that we were, and I think we probably still need more funds for digital, et cetera. But I was wondering where, if someone asks us as we support the budget, where you would see that additional funding probably being targeted?
So right now, I have some flexibility with the children's line and that I can use it to purchase print materials or digital. There is some money that we've set aside specifically for digital materials. But during the pandemic, we've been responsive to patrons and obviously the increase for digital materials have increased, so we've been able to move some of that money over. However, and Lisa, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think this will focus a lot on print materials because we find in Simsbury, this has obviously been an off year, but generally our families are very interested in print materials and they are looking for their kids to be able to read physical books. And what we're hearing from families and from the schools is that while it's convenient, the digital content for kids is not the most desirable format because a lot of parents are concerned about that screen time and that their kids are already online with either hybrid learning or so many of our programs are virtual now that I still, we still really feel that the print collection is very important, especially in children's services. And I think that's really what our patrons look for generally. As I said, this has been an off year and we've done more purchasing for the digital collection than ever before, but in general, print is still important.
Does anyone else have a question?
Of course.
With the virtual sessions that you have, approximately how many children or families do you see tune into that? And as the, as we move on beyond the pandemic, how do you see that? Do you see that still there? Do you see it? I mean, I would imagine it would recede a little bit, but would you carry on with the virtual and things that you brought about during the pandemic for the pandemic?
That's a great question. So for our school age programs, which are after school, targeted for kindergarten through grade six, we typically see about like seven to 15 kids log on. So that's a smaller number for us. When we were in person, you know, I could get like up to 25 or 50, 50 kids for an in-person craft program. So those numbers are a little bit smaller, but I will say the kids that come on are very engaged and they really enjoy the opportunity to chat with their peers while we're doodling or, you know, one of our regular programs is Lego Club. For the early childhood group, so that would be birth to, up to around age six, we have a much bigger following. So Hillary, our children's librarian, does a program called Learn with Lammy on Fridays, which is a puppet program, and she's gotten up to 50 people online for that on her Friday morning program. So she's gotten quite a following. And I will say typically our story times are around like 25 to 30-ish people in the mornings. So as to the question of whether we'll continue it moving forward, I think it will be interesting to see what the demand looks like once we return to in-person programming. I think it may be different for children than it is for adults, where I think adults value the convenience of being able to have these educational opportunities from home. But I think with children, the parents really value that kind of in-person engagement. And so I'm certainly open to continuing our virtual programs. It's really fun and easy for us. And right now, when we're not able to see kids in person, it is absolutely the highlight of our week to be able to do that. But I'm just not sure if, you know, when we have those in-person options available again, if parents will still want to take advantage of the virtual option, considering that there is that screen time component that we know families are very conscious of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. That was very well, thank you, that was excellent.
Oh, it's nice to see all of you. Thank you for all that you do for us.
Thanks, Stephanie.
You're welcome to stay on or you're welcome to drop off the meeting if you'd like. The other department head that we have with us this evening is Andrew Sherman, Sherman, who really does prefer to be called Sherm. He's the Business and Career Center Coordinator. He's been on staff for a little over a year now, Sherm, a year and a half?
It was a year in November.
Okay, yeah. So would you like to share with us some information about your department that you just rebranded?
Yeah, so the Business Resource Center, I don't know, this number seems to sound people. It's actually been in play in the library for 21 years. And when I came on board, one of the things I wanted to do was really kind of rebrand and relaunch, because we do a lot for job seeker, that too. And I didn't think the Business Resource Center name really kind of put through the message that we want to send to the community. So we rebranded as the Business and Career Center and created a logo for it and we move forward that. I think that's really playing it well to support the community of what's going on right now. Starting in January, really, I'm really focusing our programming on assisting job seekers to help folks out with the unemployment stuff we're seeing from the pandemic. So timing wise, I hate that we're in the pandemic, but I think we did a good job of kind of what the plans that we had in place have really helped us bear fruit, even in this kind of challenging time, too. So that's gone really well. If you haven't been in the Business and Career Center, we did move the business collection back into the main collection. And then the newspapers, like Wall Street Journal and that, that were in the BCC area, we moved back out with our regular newspapers. We did that for two reasons. One, I don't think people realize those materials were available back in the southwest corner of the library. And unfortunately, the pandemic, we really haven't been able to see the circulation numbers to see if we boost the use of that collection by having it back in the main collection. I think we will see that. The numbers we have are below, but it looks like they have been improving since we did that shift. So I think that's a good thing. Definitely the money we spend on newspapers and magazines, have them out with the rest of them where people are familiar with the library, can now find all those materials in one spot. I think that's a big plus. We also ordered new furniture as part of it. And if you recall, I used to be in an office clear back in the corner, out of sight in the Business Resource Center. People didn't know I was there. I just don't felt like, I didn't feel like I could really service anybody back there because I couldn't see anybody coming in, they couldn't see me back there. So part of moving the collection out, we took down a lot of that shelving and we ordered additional furniture and we've really turned it into, what I'm hoping is going to be a kind of a co-working, learning commons kind of space for us room now for people to be able to spread out. You can come work in the library once we get past the restrictions. My old office will be another small conference room, which we're desperately in need of. We have huge demand for our meeting space. And I think what we're going to have going forward with everybody shifting into remote work, being able to come into the library and meet folks or, you know, when you need to get a small meeting room and do that kind of thing, I think it really sets us up for that, too. With giving up my office, my desk is now right when you come into the BCC area. So people can see me, they know I'm there. A good example of it is the notary work we've been doing. Chris out at the reference desk, Sue and myself, huge demand for notary services right now because a lot of the banks were closed or by appointment only. We're still offering walk-in notary, which almost nobody is doing, and we don't charge for those services. That's been very, very popular. As far as programming, the programming has been successful. What's nice is during the downtime, I've developed relationships with Avon and Ridgefield's business librarians. So we're now kind of cross-promoting each other's programming. And just in January, that's resulted in probably tripling the number of registrations and attendance into the programming in January. And I'm looking for that to bear a lot of fruit going forward. So I'm very excited about that. Our virtual product use, as you can imagine, with the pandemic, has just really gone through the roof. One of the things we did that was very advantageous was we dropped the print value line for our stock investors, good people, and went online with that. And that product is getting huge use right now. And we actually are looking at maybe upgrading that to a little higher level product to give our stock pickers additional tools with that product, too. So really, I don't think we could have been better set up as far as the BCC going forward to handle what we've run into with the pandemic. Very, very fortunate there. Again, going forward, we're really going to be copying on programming to support our job seekers. I think that's going to be the big, big thing going forward for the foreseeable future until businesses can get reopened and people can get back to work. So that's really kind of my mission for the BCC going forward is to really support that effort. Probably the most popular thing I've been doing over the pandemic, if you're on the BCC email list, I've been providing email updates to our business community on, you know, pandemic relief, pandemic restrictions, things like that. We've gotten a very, very good response. People have been very happy to get that information. They like the fact that we kind of, kind of edit and clarify it for content so that they get the email from the BCC and it's just quick to the point, gives them all the information they need to know what's going on and be successful. And that's part of the feedback we've gotten on those. So I'll continue to send those out on a regular basis. For example, again, we're just getting ready to roll back some of the business restrictions a little bit for closing times and that. So we'll be putting an email message out to let all of the business community know, you know, the curfew is moving back and things like that. So really made a concerted effort to keep everybody up to date with all the changes that come down the line for our businesses as we get through the pandemic. And that is pretty much my effort. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Sherm, I just want to echo the emails that you've sent out to keep people up have been wonderful. So timely and well-written so that they're easy to understand. And thank you. I think that's been a great service to the community.
Yeah, and then going forward, one of the things I'm hoping to do is, I am the liaison to the chamber in a Main Street partnership. Unfortunately, again, with the pandemic, we haven't made a lot of strides there. Looking to kind of move that ball forward, too, a little bit, once we get going. And we still have our strong relationship with SCORE. We've been doing a lot of cross-pollination for their program. And then I've also extended out and have got a relationship now with the Community Economic Development Foundation here in Connecticut, CEDF. And so when they've had programming, it's been a benefit to our community. We've been making sure that we get the word out on that also.
Sherm, I wanted to ask a question. It sounds like to get on this email distribution list, is that like you access it through the library website and you can sign up to get on it?
Yeah, so if you go to the library's homepage and scroll down at the bottom, there's a section where you can get on. And we have multiple email lists. For example, Stephanie's children's department has an email list specific to them. So we have multiple email lists you can sign up depending what kind of content you're interested in.
Right, I know I'm on some of them, but I, I'm pretty sure I'm not on yours and I definitely want to be.
Yeah, so there's a Business and Career Center list that's on there.
Okay, great. Well, and that's something that, you know, I'd also like to just push out through my own, like, personal pages just to, to let people know that that's available. Because I see people, you know, post things all the time, like questions or questions about, you know, they're looking for a job or this or that. And I always want to make sure I'm referring them to the library as a resource. And sometimes I think people don't connect. You know, they still think of the library as a traditional library. They don't think about like the business center or things like that, so.
Right, and again, that was a big motivation for our rebrand and everything, too, is to, you know, be very clear in our message of what we offer.
Right. Well, that is great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Sherm?
Thank you, Sherm, so much. You've done a great job.
Thank you for inviting me tonight.
Yeah, thank you all for coming.
Yes, thank you so much, yeah.
Again, you're both welcome to stay and thank you so much for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
The next item is the Friends report, Greg.
A couple of things. Following up from the, your kickoff meeting on the new strategic plan, I did present it to the Friends at our last meeting. So far, there are three, three of us that are, want to participate. Our minutes haven't gone out yet, but there were some people who weren't there or came late because I spoke about it right at the beginning. I anticipate there'll be a few more people who want to be involved. The other thing is that our Daytime Great Decisions program started a couple of weeks ago. The first, first session was a little weird, some people not used to using Zoom, but we got, we got going. Third session is tomorrow. The evening group will start meeting in the second week of March. And that's a different group, although I attend both of them. Very eclectic, interesting group, both of them. So, and just wanted to let you know that that's going on. Of course, all virtually.
Any other questions of Greg? Okay. I was going to, I'm going to speak a little bit about the strategic plan, but I'll leave that until the item further down on the list. Just want to remind each of you, February, March 6th will be the budget workshop. I don't think we know yet how people, if you want to give support or what the mechanism will be, but I'm assuming it'll be online and hopefully Lisa will have a better idea or once the agenda is posted, we should be able to figure out when the library would be up to be talked about. Being virtual, I don't think you would be able to ask questions like at the beginning or make a statement, which in the past, when it's been face to face. But I believe last year, we were still able to make comments ahead of time. Although that might have been when we actually got to the Board of Selectment piece where people were arguing for the service improvements. So Lisa, do you know any more about that?
I have no further information about that right now, but I should in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
And I'll email everyone.
I'm mentioning it because that's March 6th and our next meeting will go back to the third Monday of March. So unless there's a need for a meeting, probably around the budget, I would, you know, would be the only thing that might come up. I just want you to be aware of it because we won't be meeting as a board until after that. Next, Lisa, we got your report. Is there, turn it over to you to go over anything you want to highlight.
Sure, since January's meeting was so early and this meeting is so early, we have pretty much December information included in this report. So, but some of the highlights, the Borrowing and Technical Services Department, they created and managed 13 unique displays. I think, I mean, that's, that's a lot of displays for them to manage over the course of one month. And it's really a team effort for all of them. They all do input into the creativity and the development and actually maintaining the displays. The Adult Department is currently doing a survey of the community regarding topics to engage people for future programming. of the community regarding topics to engage people for future programming. So if you haven't taken that, I bet you can find it on the library's website. And if not, I can send it to you to take. They've actually had really good response to that. About sixty-five percent people have gotten it back. Let's see, the Children's Department, as Stephanie said, publishes videos on the children's room YouTube. They garnered five hundred and thirty-one views. And they also added new picture book stacks for the winter. The topics are Let It Snow, which is perfect for today, and Lots of Love for Valentine's Day. And those book stacks are really helpful for curbside service, but it's also helpful for the people coming into browse. They can get in and out quickly with a whole stack of books. Let's see, Borrowing and Technical Services, the Caniby video streaming use has increased sixty-three percent. Great Courses, Takino Lorber Films and Magnolia Pictures are the most watched things. I think it's amazing that we have the Great Courses available online for streaming now because they were one of the highly-used pieces of circulating material in the library. And now people don't even need to come in to use them. So. Let's see, the Adult Department partnered with the Senior Center to present meaningful engagement during COVID. They had nine people attend that, which I think is, it speaks well for that program. The Borrowing and Technical Services Department, they collaborated with Simsbury Social Services to collect food pantry items and toiletries in December. And right now, they're actually collecting gift certificates for grocery stores because social services is very low on those. So they're trying to help boost that. The Business and Career Center presented twenty-twenty-year-end tax and financial planning tips, always important, always popular, fourteen people attended. And Sherman, was that something that you partnered with another library on or was that just us?
It was one of our, that was actually one of the connections I developed is with some of our local IRS people. So they are contacting me when they've got programming. So that was something we were, that was their program that we were able to help publicize.
Great. And then Simsbury Let's Talk, which the library has a liaison on the Spirit Committee. They facilitated discussion on slavery and human trafficking. And the Simsbury Let's Talk is a monthly program that we partner with the Social Services and the Spirit Committee on. We also have an ALA grant that is going in this week that was approved by the Board of Selectmen at their meeting a few weeks ago. It's a library grant through the American Library Association, but we're putting the application in and partner with the Spirit Council to provide a multicultural event in summer of 2022. So that's coming. And it's sort of an offshoot from the Simsbury Let's Talk programming. That's my report for tonight.
Does anyone have any questions about Lisa, her report? Okay. The budget, it's two-pronged. The current budget looks like we're right on target. And I guess you had said before, I didn't know if you've had any feedback about our submission to date, Lisa.
Sure. Some of the things I was going to point out on our current budget, we now have specific lines for COVID-19 expenses. One of them is under the admin section, which is the first section. And of course, it's over budget because we didn't budget for it, but it's just a cleaner way to demarcate how we're spending money on COVID. We also have a COVID-19 line item in building and grounds. And of course, that's cleaning material, cleaning equipment and material and fluids. So.
Is there anything else you want to point out?
The, if you look at in the admin section, equipment maintenance, it looks like we're over by $23,000. It's my understanding, and I need to investigate this more, but it is my understanding that the laser etcher came out of the actual budget rather than the PEGPISA grant. So I need to do some reconnaissance work on that, but I'll work on that.
Thank you.
Lisa, I just had a question about the COVID additional expenses. Do you get any extra money from the town or something for that?
The town has submitted reimbursement through the state and the federal government, but I'm not sure how much they will get. But it won't come back to the library. It'll go to the general fund.
I think I saw that we might be getting $185,000. I thought I read that someplace this week.
We have been submitting reimbursement monthly since the pandemic started. So.
The library has been submitting for reimbursement?
All the town departments have been submitting to the finance department so they can file for reimbursement, yes.
Okay, so we will get reimbursed for that?
The town will be reimbursed. The library will not.
Okay. I see what you're saying, that you're submitting to the town what you're spending so that the town can get reimbursed. Got it. Okay.
That model holds true. The fines, even though we collected them when we had fines, the money that we collected or lost books always went back to the town. It did not come back to our budget. So even if we had then replaced material, it came out of our budget and not the pot that it went to.
Okay.
So that's, you know, I think the town's been very good in understanding, though. So we get forgiveness at the end if that's the difference, I think. Especially since, as I said, I read, I think in the current, that it was probably going to be about $185,000. So unless something's out of whack, I'm sure that will be taken into consideration.
Mary Ann, that $185,000 is for the whole town, not just the library?
Yes, yes, that's for the whole town.
Okay. And Lisa, is there?
I will recognize, you know, the library's over, but gee, we did get this portion reimbursed, as Lisa said. They're giving them the data that supports that submission. Amber?
And just to follow up on the COVID topic, have you had any conversations with the town, Maria, regarding like our library hours? Or are we just in kind of a maintaining position right now for the hours, the public hours that we have? I mean, I'm not hearing anything or seeing anything online about any, you know, people saying that they'd like, you know, why aren't we reopening more? But I'm just curious if.
At the moment, we're just maintaining our limited open hours for walk-ins. And part of the reason we're doing that is that Public Works maintains both Town Hall and the library. So the library is open opposite days from Town Hall. So the Public Works people can focus on cleaning Town Hall when they're open and focus on cleaning the library when we're open. Also, Simsbury right now is a red community, which means we have an inordinate number of COVID cases. So that would say we shouldn't open the library more. So that's where we are right now. We meet every other week to discuss where we're going and plans for the future, though.
Well, I was just curious, since it sounds like we're going to be loosening some restrictions and if statewide. So if that starts to happen, I'm sure eventually this topic will creep back into the public mind.
Yes.
Has there been any talk about allowing face-to-face, well, open board meetings? I know the Board of Education has their meetings in a public forum, in a room large enough to accommodate that safely. And I didn't know if there was any talk about doing that on the other town board levels.
There has not been talk of doing that at the other town board levels, no.
Okay. I guess I'm selfishly, I miss it. Although tonight, we wouldn't have had a meeting if we didn't have the remote. So. Is there anything else you want to say on either the budget?
I have nothing more for the current budget, but as far as the submission for fiscal year 21, 22, there were minor changes made when I met with the town manager. We added $400 for an AED battery. We have an AED device in the library. We also budgeted for one quarter of the revenue expected in a normal year. It was pretty close to what we had already budgeted, but it's slightly less. After some discussion, we thought that was probably the better way to proceed since we don't know what fiscal year 21, 22 will look like with in-person meetings because we get revenue from rooms or copies. If we're not open that often, we won't see that much revenue from copies and prints. Some interesting news, the capital request we had for technology replacement will actually come from the IT budget. So that will not be a capital request coming from the library. The town is actually putting together an overall technology replacement plan for all of the technology across all of the departments.
That's great. That's great.
And then the architectural study for the BCC, we had talked about when we passed the budget here, pushing that off a year, was an architectural study to make the BCC more of a co-working space. And Sherman and I also talked about this, and he agrees that it's probably a good idea to push it off a year since, again, we don't know what 21, 22 will look like. Those were really all the changes.
Okay, great. Thank you. If you can just keep us informed as we get closer to the workshop so we can be prepared, but also know when it is.
Sure.
Going on to the strategic plan. I really appreciate all the support all of you have given us so far. Heather and Kathleen have agreed to be co-chairs of the Strategic Plan Committee. The board members that will be on it will be Heather, Kathleen, Amber, and myself. But that doesn't mean that the plan's going to be limited to just the four of us. All of us are going to have to participate as far as getting together with the ideas. I assume that each month we'll have a meeting where the subcommittee can bring forth the issues that have come up or what have been decided and to look for whatever help they might need. And certainly to keep everyone abreast because in the bottom line, it's the board's strategic plan and it requires input from everybody and the approval of everybody to go forward. But I'm really happy that the three of us, myself, have really stepped up. And I especially appreciate, you know, people that haven't been on the board that are really anxious and understanding to get involved and make sure that it carries on because you're a younger generation. No offense, guys, that are my age. So we'll hear more every month as we do that. But I just want to let you know, I think one of the things we'll be reaching out as a committee, and Heather, you can jump in, will be solidifying the committee members. So is there anything, Heather or Kathleen, that you want to say?
I would just like to say that, yeah, we'll definitely work on getting the committee together and look forward to all the input and just kind of doing this together as a board to get it, to come up with the best plan going forward, similar to what we already had.
Thank you. That's really all I have on the agenda. Are there any other issues that we should talk about or put on a future meeting? It needs research, et cetera? Otherwise, I really want to thank Stephanie and Sherman for participating. I think it's great to give everybody a deeper understanding of the department and what's available with the library because it is so much more than books. It's sharing knowledge. It's getting people engaged. It's helping people abreast of what's going on and to be the, you know, really be a community center. So I just really appreciate the two of you taking your time to join us tonight. And we just appreciate it so much. With that being said, if there's nothing else, could I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Kathleen, a second?
Again.
Heather, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody stay warm and healthy.
Be safe.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.